Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll start with the Grove Hall of Members. Michael Frodo, Chair.
Jared O'Connell, Vice Chair.
Russell Blanchett, Member.
Jesse Nowell, Alternate.
Leitha Riley, Member.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. And with us this evening is Jay Menkara from NRPC. Welcome. And we have Joan McKibben, Actuary Administrator. Looks like we do have a quorum, but we don't have a full board. I know Travis is not with us this evening, and I understand that Jeremy is not going to be with us this evening. And I don't have our ex officio member here as well. So Jesse, since you're an alternate, would you be interested in voting in Travis's place tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so that will complete that. Any input on non-agenda items this evening? Items not listed on the agenda for this evening. Does anybody from the public have anything for non-agenda items? Okay. Hearing none. I will close public input on non-agenda items. The first order of business this evening is a home occupation application. Public hearing for in-home childcare at eighteen Laurel Street. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, six-thirty a.m. to six p.m. Applicant owner Kayla Riendo? Is that how you said? And is the applicant here?
Yeah.
So why don't you folks come? You can have a seat at the table. Introduce yourselves to the board.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kayla Riendo. I am twenty-six, and I am proposing an in-home daycare of my own. I will preface this by saying I'm very passionate about it, but I'm also very nervous because I've never done anything like this. So, and it means a lot.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
So this is a home occupation. Our rules are basically, our requirements for all home occupations are listed in Section five oh four point zero one for general requirements. Basically, A through C, so there's no additions or changes shall be made to the residence that will make it impractical to revert the building to purely residential use. Traffic generated by home occupation shall not create safety hazards or be substantially greater in volume than would normally expect in the neighborhood, and home occupation shall have a maximum area of five hundred square feet. You should have all received, folks, an application for the applicant. So what I just read out to you basically is the general requirements for home occupation. It looks like you, is this is going to be at eighteen Laurel Street in Litchfield? And is it just going to be yourself working at this daycare? Or are you going to have other people there?
Just myself.
Just yourself?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you have five hundred square feet devoted to the business?
Yep.
Looks like. There's also a map, I believe, that's attached to the application, just so everyone knows. Everybody have an opportunity to take a look at that. Pretty straightforward. And parking provision, so you're looking for five spaces or provision for five vehicles? Is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
And you're saying the trip, travel, traffic trips will be generated, will be thirty per week? And you have two, you have external lighting? I guess you have two sets of external lighting?
Correct.
Okay. And there will be no sign requested for this, correct?
Nope, yes.
Okay. And then there was no, currently no home occupation on that site?
No.
My understanding. Okay, all right. Joan, it looks like all the application fees have been paid?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think, do we notify our butters for this?
Yes, our butters will know.
So our butters have been notified? Okay. Typically, do we want to do, do we typically accept application for completeness for the home occupation? Or is that?
Typically not for the home occupation.
I didn't think so. Yeah, no, I haven't done one of these in a while. Okay. So I guess, does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant before we go any further?
So how many children are you planning on, or from unrelated families are you planning on having there?
Six total.
Okay. So you have six total and you said thirty vehicle per, per week?
Right.
Okay, that, is that for, because it's going to be two trips?
Right, some of them are siblings.
Okay.
Yeah.
So yeah, that'll reduce the number of vehicle trips. Like, the worst-case scenario, you end up with people from entirely different families.
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
Arriving five days a week, which would be probably more than the amount on the application?
Right, let's look quick math on that.
I don't know if that matters.
Were some of the children your children of the sex?
Yes, yes, two of them are my own children.
So yeah, four.
Right.
So that reduces transportation load?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to note, too, we also live on a dead end, so there's not really traffic coming from the opposite side. It would really just be the one-way-in, one-way-out kind of thing.
Yeah, I think worst-case scenario, you'll end up, yeah, that, that works.
One thing I forgot, I don't know if you told me when you applied, did the fire department already come to the home?
Yes, yep. So I got approval from the fire department. The health form is already approved as well. I think it's important to note that I also have a representative with the state of New Hampshire because I planned if this is approved to be licensed through the state of New Hampshire. So that is already in the process, and I do have her approval as well.
That was actually going to be my next question.
Yeah.
First off, you know, thank you for wanting to, you know, enter the profession. We don't have enough, you know, childcare providers in the country.
I appreciate that, I totally do, yeah.
Yeah, my question was going to be, you know, your credentialing and.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm actually credentialed in the state of New Hampshire as a teacher already with infant and toddler endorsements. I hold an associate's degree in early childhood education. I think my best form of experience is becoming a mother myself. I have two young kids, so this is kind of how I plan to stay home with them and still bring in some income as well.
Let me see, the Litchfield requirements will require you to get all the applicable licensing requirements from the state of New Hampshire and the Department of Health and Human Services, Child Care Licensing Unit, the New Hampshire Child Care Program Licensing Rules and Regulations and all that stuff.
Right, yeah, already done.
Awesome.
I mean, I am CPR certified, first aid certified. I even got water safety certified, so we could do water play. Like I said, I'm very passionate about it, and it means a lot to me, so. I tried to make sure I had everything done for tonight.
And you will need to submit a copy of the license annually to the town?
Okay.
That is a requirement of the home occupation.
Sure.
So most of the, I mean, most of the traffic will be from, probably in, early in the morning?
Right, yeah, and drop-off and pickup times do vary, you know what I mean? Like, some kids would come closer to nine, some get dropped off at seven. You know, everybody has a different work schedule, so it's not like there'd be more than two vehicles at a time, so to speak.
Yeah, likely won't be generating a lot of traffic.
Right, right. I think the school bus generates more traffic than I would, you know?
And how much time are you planning on having outdoors with the kids? I think that would probably be when neighbors would be most concerned.
Right, yeah, so typically, it's like once a day. I mean, in the warmer weather, I would shoot for like once in the morning, once post-nap kind of thing. The other thing that is important to note, too, and I might be squealing on myself a little bit, right now, we don't have a fenced-in yard. I did get approval from the state as well that as soon as the ground is thawed, which happened faster than I assumed it would, a fence will be going in.
Yeah, yeah, it is a requirement that it has to be fenced if there is an outdoor player.
Yeah, right, so as of yet, there's really no action out there, but eventually, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, some of the questions around the, the six kids. I just want to make sure that you understand. I heard that two of them are yours, some of them are siblings, but we have to look at it as those six could be from all different families. And that's fine, you know, it's fine. It's just, with that in mind, my next question is, you know, as it stands right now, are a lot of those families, are they going to make the six o'clock time in the evening for pickup? Or will it be the type of thing where it would be an exception, not a rule, where, you know, parents work late a lot? Some come from Boston? Do, you know where I'm going with this?
Yeah, so I've thought a little bit further ahead as well. So I would implement a policy, like a late, a late fee-type policy. As I stated before, I do have two young kiddos of my own, and they go to bed at seven. So I really do need the people in my home to be gone by six o'clock. And like I said, if that isn't applicable, then they will be charged a late fee. And I would hope that that would deter the behavior. You know, I can't speak for everybody, but that's my hope.
Sure.
Do we need to do anything on the application itself to accommodate potential late hours due to a person staying late? Because obviously, that would be the exception, not the rule.
Right, right.
Yeah, and that's, it's not in our regulations. So, I mean, i- i- if you want the approval, you could say approximate. And that might be.
Yeah, it's less strict than it is with like full applications for site plans and stuff like that, right?
Because, of course, there are times.
Right, life happens.
My kids in childcare, I mean, that, that happens.
And do you, do you envision? Pickup and drop-off? Do you envision parents bringing their kids in or them waiting in the car and the kids being brought out?
Oh, no, they have to come in, that's not safe. I wouldn't leave other children unattended.
No, and it wasn't necessarily a reflection of that, it was more from the, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear on my question, but I'm trying to understand from a neighbor, like if I were a neighbor.
Sure.
You know, is there going to be a backup of cars? You know, because, say, you're queuing like you do at a school?
Right.
You know what I mean?
I don't, I wouldn't anticipate that just because it is such a small setting of children. And then, again, our driveway is rather large. We could fit a decent amount of cars, I mean, more than the children that would be attending. But I, I don't, I don't see it.
So you would envision, it sounds like people incoming and going from your home as if they were your relatives type of thing?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
More or less, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Jay, anything you want to add? Uh, no, it seems to me the requirements. Okay. Thank you. Well, at this time, I'll open up to public comment. Any members of the public wish to comment on the application for home occupation for this applicant?
Can I ask a question, though?
Yeah, well, just a moment, let me, okay, so I guess we don't have any public comments, so I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to you if you can ask a question.
Do your neighbors know you're doing this?
Yes, yeah.
Are they generally supportive?
Yeah, yeah, so my grandfather's been a resident there for my entire life. They all know, they all love him, so that did aid my case a little bit. But, yeah, before the butters list went out, my son and I walked around, and we introduced ourselves to everybody and let them know what we were trying to do. That way, they could see my face instead of just reading a piece of paper about me.
Yeah, that's good practice.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that.
Like I said, like, it's, I'm very passionate. I really, really want this, so.
Good neighbors are always a good buddy.
We're grateful, that's for sure. And I mean, how can you be upset when you see like a line of little two-year-olds waddling down the street? You know, like, they just bring smiles, it's wholesome.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no, that's okay. And how many, did you say how many children would have in the, would be taken care of? Is it, is there a fixed number, or do you know?
So with the state, you, you have to follow different ratios, and that's calculated by ages. So you add all the ages in the room and then divide it by the number of children, and that's how you get the ratio. Primarily, I'm looking to do like preschool age. That way, I could have the six children there, and the ratio would be met.
Okay. Okay. Don't know if there's any other questions. I guess, so we have the home occupation, we have our regulations for approval. What would the board like to do? We can certainly conditionally approve. And so wants to make a motion?
Are there any conditions that we?
No.
Mr. Chair, am I going to make a motion that we approve this home occupation?
Okay, so I have a, a motion on the table by Russ.
I'll second.
I have a second by Leitha. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the home occupation permit application for the applicant Kayla Riendo at eighteen Laurel Street, Litchfield, New Hampshire, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right, motion passes five zero zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Like you're all set.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I'll, I'll email you a copy.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda is an application, public hearing for subdivision and two lot-line adjustments. Owners are David and Linda Spurberg, tax map three, lot twenty-nine, one nineteen Charles Bancroft Highway; Brian Ward and Kayla Flanagan, map three, lot thirty-eight, nine Talent Road; Scott McConnell and Janine Spurberg, map three, lot forty-three, eleven Talent Road. Purposes to adjust the lot lines between lots twenty-nine and thirty-eight, creating a two-point-zero-one-four lot and lot, at lot thirty-eight, nine Talent Road. Simultaneously subdivide adjusted lot twenty-nine into three lots, two new lots fronting on Talent Road. The original lot twenty-nine will remain fronting at one nineteen Charles Bancroft Highway. If the aforementioned subdivision application is accepted, notice is hereby expended to application, approval, consideration, and or continuations to a date certain as required. Is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, I am.
And could the applicant introduce themselves to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Pete Madsen, Senior Project Engineer, Keach Nordstrom Associates.
Okay, good evening and welcome back. I believe the last time you were here, we did have an issue because we could not accept the application for completeness given there was an issue with the mail and not all of the butters had been notified. So I guess I'll turn to Joan. Joan, did new butter notices go out and have all the butters been notified for this application?
Yes, new notices went out on March, I can't remember what it is, March seventh, I think it is.
Okay.
They've all been notified, and fees have been paid.
And all fees have been paid, okay, thank you. And obviously, Jay, you've had an opportunity to review all of the plans for this application, and all, I believe the applicant has met all the requirements for the application for completeness.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and I'm going to assume there is no regional impact for this project? All right, so we have an application. It looks like all fees have been paid, a butter's notified this time, and it looks like all of the submissions have been submitted, and they look to be accepted. So I would ask the board to entertain a motion to accept the application for its completeness if they so desire.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Russ.
Second.
I have a second by Jared. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion for the application completeness, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Okay, so we have accepted the application for completeness. Maybe you can just give us, I know you kind of talked about it last time, but maybe just give us an overview of what you're proposing to do with this application for subdivision, so.
Yeah.
I'll give it the floor to you.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. Like I said, Pete Madsen, Senior Project Engineer, Keach Nordstrom. I know I kind of went over things last time. I think we might have some new faces here, so I'll keep it short. I think it's pretty straightforward here, what we're doing. So the parent parcel is a little over nine and a half acres. And basically, there's three parts to this. One, we're looking to subdivide the parent parcel into three lots, two new lots, and those new lots are both a little over an acre and a half, so they're sized for duplexes. The next part is parcel A, which is in pink there, and that's just going to be deeded back to the lot in front of it. And then the same thing with parcel B in yellow, just deeded to the lot in front of that as well. It's important to note, both of these new lots are going to be on individual septic and municipal water and driveways off of Talent Road, so. With that, I'll turn it back over to you guys. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? I know in Jay's report, there were a couple of things that were missing last time, and I think those, some of those have, my understanding, have been addressed. For example, Section five ten point zero zero G, the bar scale needed to be provided on the plan, has that been done?
Yes.
Okay. And Section five three zero point zero zero D, the wetland area for proposed lot twenty-nine dash two, indicated in the lot area table, that seems to have been addressed.
Yes, sir.
Section five three zero point zero zero I, note thirteen, addresses stumps, but does not indicate whether they will be disposed of on or off-site. And this should have been specified, I assume that was addressed. I guess there was a note number thirteen that addresses that. Section five thirty point zero zero L, a letter from Pennechuck stating the availability of water and the intent to provide service to the lots, should it be, should they be provided? Is that been done, or is that in the process of being done?
So that's the one outstanding item, it's in process.
One outstanding, okay, so that, that is on its way.
Yes, they're tough to get a hold of. I've sent a couple of emails, so hopefully soon.
Okay, great. And Section five thirty point zero zero W, reference to the floodplain, wetland, and aquifer conservation districts added to the plan, note four, that has also been addressed, I understand. Okay. Okay.
So we'll probably want, when we approve this, we'll probably want to add that condition for the letter from Pennechuck.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, makes sense. And has the, has there been anything from the fire department? Did they talk to you at all, or did you get anything?
I have not heard anything, no.
Okay, I'm just curious. Okay. And if there is a thing here, I guess legends have been amended? What is that?
Yeah, so, so basically, there are just some conflicting line types on the actual plan view versus the legend, so those just got cleaned up.
So they were, the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot woodland buffer was added to the plan? All right. Jay, is there anything else that, or is there anything you would like to add?
I know, I think they've, they've addressed all the concerns. I was going to say, it's pretty straightforward, it actually feels a little complicated just because there's a lot going on, but really, it is, end of the day, it's taking two existing lots, making them larger, and creating two additional lots. So it really is fairly straightforward.
Okay. Bless you.
The fire department did send an email about the street numbers, and that was the only thing they said.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, what did they say?
Lot twenty-nine dash one will be number five, twenty-nine dash two will be number seven on Talent Road.
And that's actually been added to the plan? It's right under the text for the proposed lots.
Okay. All right. And all, I assume, all proposed deeds and easements have been, I guess, addressed for the application?
Yeah, we, I don't know that we've submitted anything, but they will be submitted prior to final.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? If there's nothing else, at this time, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there any members of the public here this evening who wish to comment on this application? Okay, so what I'm going to ask is you folks will have to come forward. You're going to have to introduce yourself to the board, state your name and address, and then, obviously, you can provide comment.
So the folks at home can hear you through the microphone.
So they can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my grandparents, six, Talent Road. So we live across the street from where this project is. And last time, the last meeting in the beginning of March that was rescheduled, we were here. And even though you didn't have the meeting, he was kind enough to go over all the plans for us in the hallway, so we did get a chance to see that. And we did speak to the homeowner, she did come over and tell us what was going on and explain what was happening there. And so, at this point, we didn't see any problems with it.
Okay, good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to add for public comment this evening regarding this application? Well, seeing none, at this time, I am going to close public input on this application. I'll bring it back to the board. I guess, what is the will of the board? Would the board want to conditionally approve this subdivision application? With the, obviously, the condition of the Pennechuck letter. And I think also I would make as a condition of approval that the deeds and any deeds, covenants, or easements be submitted prior to final approval.
Is that a standard requirement?
Well, it's not a standard requirement, but we can make it a condition, I think. I mean, it makes sense, I mean, because they have to provide it. It's part of the application process.
But what about that condition would be our, our interest?
Well, I, I think it's just that they have to, I think what it is, is they have to provide the information that everything is sort of updated in terms of the deeds and restrictions and covenants. And just, it's just a formality.
Well, and it shows that it transferred into those subdivided lots as we have approved.
Right, exactly, so that it makes sense to, it's as a part of the, the process for there.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that in mind, would anyone want to entertain a motion? If there's any other conditions that you want to add, certainly let me know. If not, we can approve it, if that's so will of the board. I think it's a pretty standard application.
So the letter from Pennechuck?
Mm-hmm.
How should we word the deed one?
A copy of any deeds, easements, or covenants.
Covenants.
Submitted to the town.
Yeah.
Deeds or covenants?
Right.
Is there any applicable deeds, covenants? Or deeds for all properties?
Associated.
Associated with, specifically with the properties.
Restrictions or covenants, yeah, easements or covenants, yeah.
Right.
That, any other conditions?
Just the standard conditions.
Just the standard conditions of approval, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the subdivision and lot-line adjustment for map three, lots twenty-nine, thirty-eight, and forty-three, with the conditions being that the letter from Pennechuck water for the intent to service be provided, a copy of any deeds or covenants associated with the application.
Or easements, deeds, covenants.
Or covenants or easements associated with the application be provided, and the standard conditions of approval.
And I think, since there's, there's a state, is there a state permit, or is that pending?
Uh, yeah, there's a, because these are on individual septics, there will, there will be a state permit.
So I guess follow all, a condition that, you know, they follow.
That's actually in the standard.
Is, is it standard? Okay, I just want to make sure, got it?
Okay.
Yes, it is, okay, thank you.
My motion is complete.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jared with those conditions. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Russ. Any further discussion? Okay. All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the application for this subdivision, for the two lot-line adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes five zero zero. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I love that neighbors were talking. That's a good thing.
Yes.
We like to hear them. Yeah, that's great. Thank you for taking the time to explain to them last time, too. That's very helpful.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda, number three, is a planning board workshop, and I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Minkara.
So I don't have too much. I think last time, we kind of brainstormed, and there was a whole lot of different stuff that we talked about potentially, looking at, parking is one of them. One of the things I'd like to do is just come up with some suggested changes for parking. There were a few things that we talked about there. You know, one, accommodating multi-use sites, which we really don't do well. Some of our categories are inconsistent. We had some, you know, rather strange requirement of two garage spaces and multifamily, so there were some odd things there. And then I think as also, we noted and had actually handed out last time, there were changes to state law regarding parking. I will say, whatever we do now, I think is tentative, because there are more changes coming. I think if everybody's been watching, just in, just in general, we don't typically start looking at our zoning until later in the season. Summer or fall, or early fall, but there's a lot, I think, to keep our eyes on, that we may wind up being addressing. I, I should just jump back a little bit, but I think, as we all know, the zoning amendments did all pass. So we will get everybody revised, right, you know, we'll give you the whole packet revised, because it'll also include the stormwater. So that led to, again, there's a lot of things that we could do and a lot of things to talk about. I kind of dove into the design guidelines just a little bit, and I thought that maybe we could throw out some thoughts today. And if things make sense, I could try and take a stab at putting something together. So to, to get there, I just started looking around to, of course, to see what are some other good examples that are out there that might be applicable to us. I will say, it was harder than I thought. We do have, you know, as I mentioned before, some design standards, which I, I think are reasonable, but probably could be tweaked. What I found is, is that most of the guidelines that I found, or the standards related to town centers, village, traditional village, et cetera, were either for historic districts, or they were for those very traditional historic New England town centers that we don't really have. So I saw a fair amount of that. And, you know, I looked mainly for New Hampshire examples, didn't see as many as I'd want, although there are some that are out there. And then I saw some Massachusetts examples, so I thought what I'd do is just touch on a couple of things that I found that I thought had some value. And what I liked and what I didn't. The other thing, I guess, I was going back and forth with is, do we want to adopt standards or guidelines? Obviously, the guidelines are, this is what we'd like to see, and the standards are, this is what you must do. So there's some, obviously, and I suppose you could have some combination thereof, where there are actual standards, and then there are also some suggested guides. And I, I saw both kinds of things out there, so I figured I would look at a couple of ones. So just starting with, you know, I, I took a look at the town of Durham, and I kind of liked some of the things I saw. Again, Durham, I'm not gonna go through all of this. You know, they kind of do their overview and their findings and purpose, et cetera. Maybe I can go this way a little bit faster. But, but some of the things that they talked about, I, I, you know, have some value, looking for high-quality design, human scale, those kinds of words, I think, make sense for what we're talking about. And I'm not gonna get into a lot of, these are regulations, so they go into a lot of specific stuff that we don't necessarily need to get to right now, using these regulations, definitions. Again, what I'm trying to get to is more this. So these are kind of where you get into the standards. And what I like, and we see a lot of this with, in the, at least in the examples that I like, are where you, you talk about, again, they have different areas. We won't have all these same areas, but the basic theme is, is that they talk about the general character. They actually define, in their case, they're showing you existing buildings that they think are contributing, if you will, to that character. And so, nice, nice to have pictures and images, and, and they're using these as prototypes. And then they go outside of their own community and say, these are examples that we've seen in other communities. Importantly, though, all communities, or I should say, most of these are communities that are within, they're all New England, they're also things that people could go and see. So there's a value in showing examples of what you want to see. Interestingly, so they did a charade, I guess, that's very nice, the heads of imagery came up, but that's really basically the theme. And then you get into descriptions about what it is about these buildings that they're looking for. You know, they're talking about the roofs and, you know, front-facing gables, the siding, the different kinds of things that they're looking for. And these are, so when I say a kind of a combination of a standard and a guideline, these aren't saying there's any one thing you have to do. They're giving you examples of the kind of materials that they want to see. Their guidelines apply to different districts. We don't really have that, at least not right now. In the future, we could. But, so they're getting into different, you know, concepts as they go. Again, it's the exact same thing that we saw before. So let's just more to, that we want to see there. I thought I would move on. I don't like this visually at all, but this is a more recent example. So Londonderry does have what they call their look book. I did kind of like the name. And it really is, so, so these are standards, I, I'm sorry, not standards, these are guidelines. And they're basically showing you and defining different types of things. These, that's not what they want. They do like this. I'm not sure, I get where they're going. I can't say I love it. But they're trying to basically give examples. Now, this is a very different community. This is not a historic town center. So they're looking at really large-scale commercial development and industrial development in their case. But again, they could have done a much better job in these kind of expanded pictures that really don't fit and don't look good. But at least, they're, they're going through and saying, by the different types of uses, office, big box, et cetera, these are our preferred looks, these are our preferred styles. So kind of very much in contrast to a more regulatory approach that we just saw in Durham, which does have, we like this, but it is saying, it is putting in real specifics. This really doesn't. This is simply saying, for each of these, strip retail, et cetera, this is our preference. So, and they go through each different category. There is, you know, again, these are not the same as what we're necessarily looking for. The, the concept, though, is not a bad one. If you want to take a simple approach, it's simply saying, these are the different types of uses that we're looking at.
Don't do that.
Right, it's really, really very simple, and it gives anybody looking at it, you know, could pick it up, and I get the idea of what you're going for. Maybe that's enough. And then I found Harvard, Mass. So this is, and the Harvard, Mass. example was the, of those types of communities, it was less, you know, ye olde New England village. Not that they don't have that, they do. But this, I also did like, it's giving you some examples, both in terms of layout and look. So it's now saying, this is kind of what we want to see, and these were mainly, going through, la, la, la. Get through all this. I'm sorry?
It's a big document.
Yeah, they've got a lot in here. They're also addressing more things. As you can see, sustainable development is a thing they're into. They incorporate energy, so they're incorporating more than just, you know, aesthetics. So this is for a defined district, so they're showing us the area. I thought it was interesting how they did that with an aerial, an adapted aerial, and the different zones within this district. For us, that is applicable, and of course, again, they're saying, what's the purpose of the guidelines? These are guidelines. It is valuable to have a purpose statement. And then here are kind of the general standards we're looking for you to adhere to. This is kind of a general standard for the roofs and the overhangs and the pitches, et cetera. So again, not hard and fast, not giving you dimensions, but they're saying, this is what we're looking for. And then this is really your, your, your point of do this, don't do that. So they do explicitly recommended, not recommended. And whether we think it's a nice thing to do or not, they also do identify the recommended and not recommended, so you, you can see. What I do like is that they also put in a little bit of why. And that is kind of valuable. Well, what is it you don't like about that? It is a pitched roof. Oh, it's not articulated. Oh, that's what you're looking for. So there's a value in, you know, really being specific about that. And of course, yeah, we don't like roof signs. Actually, you do have one in your, one that you like, but I won't go. Maybe they don't consider a porch sign or a roof sign. And now we get into facade guidelines, and kind of very, very similarly, these are the things that we're generally looking for. We actually do have some things similar to this in our own regulations about breaking up facades, et cetera. And then once again, we have this recommended, not recommended, and an explanation as to why. And then moving on down, again, building composition. I guess I would also say that I like that, that they're not just mashing everything that we like, that we don't like, a section on roofs, a section on, you know, or in this case, the building groupings, a section on facades. So there is a value to, to that, because you're being really concise. And then once again, recommended, not recommended, guidelines for the organization of buildings and uses. This is the kind of thing, I think, that will be really important to our district, because we spent a lot of time thinking about that. So kind of talking about organizing the buildings to create a, you know, promote compact urban development, et cetera. Creating a focal point, number three, a town green, outdoor sculpture, et cetera. You know, the way the buildings are arranged, the walkability aspects, so there's definitely a value to that. And then, again, you've got your kind of recommended, not recommended example of a layout. I think that's, you know, and again, why? So for us, I think that's particularly valuable. I'm not gonna go through too much more detail in this, but I think you really get the idea of kind of what they're doing and how, and I can share all of these, you know, or maybe post them to the portal. What also jumped out at me was, if you look here on the lower right, was credit Montgomery County Planning Commission. Because that really takes us back to what we've looked at before. But these are the mixed-use district guidelines that we had previously looked at, which notably come from Montgomery County, right? And so, in my little doodling around, these guidelines are being used and referenced by other communities adopting similar guidelines. So whenever I see that, that adds, you know, kind of credibility. There's a reason. These are being vetted by other folks. Not that they're adopting a wholesale, of course not. There are a lot of differences. But when I come and I, I look at these Montgomery County guidelines, I think there's really, there's a lot here that I think really makes sense, and a lot of what we were talking about. There's a lot in here that does not apply to us. But, you know, I like kind of pulling out, what are the key elements of, you know, a village mixed-use district? What does, what does that really, what does that mean, and how do you define that? And I think having something like that is really valuable. It means interconnected streets and sidewalks. It means essential open space. It means the kinds of things that we were talking about. They give local examples. I think having those are good, although frankly, we don't have a whole lot. Because we're not talking about Tuscan Village. We're not talking about Mashpee Commons, not at our scale. So maybe we're not gonna find too many good ones. Maybe we will be going outside of our area. I think that's okay. They give a lot. They talk about benefits. We're talking about guidelines. I don't think we need to talk about benefits necessarily. You know, that's, that's a nice to have. And then kind of suitable locations, we've already defined where ours is, so I don't think going through anything like that is necessary. Historic character also, where, where we're talking about, there isn't really much in the way of historic character. So I don't know that that's valuable. That's not uncommon in these. As I mentioned, I didn't look at a lot of the examples that really focused on that, because it's not relevant to us. Permitted uses, we've already addressed in our ordinance. We don't need to address that here. We do allow mixed-use buildings, but I think showing examples of that would have some value. Overall, mixed requirements is also something I think that's already in our ordinance. I don't know that, we, we don't need to specify percentages, although that's not uncommon. What does have, I think, a value is showing examples. Again, density is in our ordinance. We don't need to get there. Dimensional requirements is an area that I think really has a value in our addressing, because I think what we're looking for is beyond, you know, we really didn't create those internally, and I think we had had conversations around that, and one of the things we talked about was, where do we address those in the regulations or in the ordinance? We came down on the regulations. So this is an area where we really want to think about them. Here, they push, you know, that garages should be less prominent. You, for the townhouse-type units, garages under ground level are allowed. But in these specifically, they are, you know, they encourage at least fifty percent of the front yard should be green space. So you can't turn it all into a driveway. There's gotta be green space driveway, so that's, that kind of made sense. That's making, that's contributing to that walkable, more attractive character. Some do, of course, encourage that the, if you have garages, that they're to the rear. They also, I think it's actually in this next, not quite in this one. Again, general layout, I do like the idea of trying to address layout, at least concepts or principles around layout. Our parcels are typically not so large that I think we're really gonna have street systems. I suppose it's possible that you, you might have a couple of internal roads. I don't think we're gonna have anything this large. In their example, if I recall correctly, their minimum area was a thirty-acre lot. So that's much larger than, than what we're looking at. But the interconnectivity, I think, makes sense. A lot of these, I really, I do like. I like the idea, I like the way this image, some of these guidelines, I think, absolutely make sense. You do want large windows. You do want things to be walkable, close to the street, et cetera. But it's kind of nice to show an example, show what you're looking for, and do that pointing. The Harvard example did that in, also in a different way. They just said, here's the image of what we like, and here are the reasons. This is good. Here is what we don't like. So it's, it's similar to that. Whether you do the negative or not, I think having the positive is really important. And then again, this is really, this is the residential standards, and the other examples that we were looking at were all non-residential. So I think, obviously, really, the bulk of what we're gonna see is residential, so having those guidelines is really important. And I, you know, I kind of like those examples. And I, you know, I kind of like those examples. And again, parking standards, you know, we kind of touched on that. Of course, they want them typically in the rear. But again, here you're showing different ways you can accommodate parking. And there's a variety, you know, of different options that, that they're showing. And again, you're showing the image as well. And they are showing the negative, like up in the upper left, that's what you don't want, that large. Basically, the driveway and the garage are the dominant feature that you see. We're seeing a lot more of that now. I like to call it the garage with the house behind it. With a house addition. Again, open space and having some guidelines around that, I do think is important. Especially the concept of, to the extent possible, having some sort of central open space, I do think is key. What we do tend to find, and it's not a dig against, you know, our open space ordinance, it's just, it's always around the periphery. And there's usually detention bases in it. Do we, a primary park, that's probably getting farther than we wanna go with fountain, not to say we don't want fountains. And then signage, having some, you know, we've got our sign ordinance, but if we're trying to achieve a particular look and feel, having some specific sign guidelines, I think really makes a lot of sense. And then they get into their model ordinance, and this is really, really detailed. And I don't think we need to get into all of this. You know, these are kind of, you know, feel free to look at, at your leisure. There's a lot in here. But one of the concepts in here that I, I think addresses one of the concerns that we, that we did have is what they tend, what they provide here, what they call for here is basically a setback window, a minimum and a maximum. So you want, you do want it a certain distance back, but you also don't want it so far back that it's not walkable. And I think that kind of makes sense is to think about what does that internal setback look like? So that's, again, I don't wanna, now we're getting to in a lot of detail, and I don't know that we wanna get into that much detail. But, you know, landscaping is another one. We have kind of very general landscape requirements. This is kind of where you probably do wanna think about street trees and, you know, what does that look like? So that's kind of my thinking, and I, 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 I think if these directions make sense, what I'd like to do is to start putting together what a draft might look like, pulling in some of these elements. And ideally finding that it's gonna take, I think, a little while to build, but finding local examples wherever we can. I figure at this point, I'll start just stealing examples from these folks and then backfilling it, right, with local examples. So that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
So, thank you for all of that. I think the most important first steps are going to be, like, keeping in mind what is likely to come through next. And make sure that it would be something the town would be happy with. Because knowing that developer, they'll definitely create something that would comply with our requirements. But I don't know how much the town would like it exactly. Like, as proposed in the draft, it's just, okay, a little section of commercial near the corner. And then all the residential behind that. It doesn't incorporate as much of the integration as we've been discussing and, and as proposed in that mixed-use village district thing, our proposal. For example, the looking at, in terms of the, the design of the commercial aspect, I think that's gonna be the most important in parking. Park us. I think the residential, I don't think, I don't think the residents of Litchfield are gonna love medium-density residential there, but I think the developers in town have done a good job mostly fitting with the character, except for the big parking garages. So I think we need to specifically address the parking garages. We're definitely gonna need guidelines for the commercial part of it. Looking at the pictures that you showed and looking at like a more commercial area of a town that I've been in the past. Like awnings and porches definitely change the feel of it. It, like, strip mall doesn't have porches or awnings or anything like that typically. It's typically for when you have those older style things like that. And I think the residents of Litchfield would definitely appreciate that style more so.
I think that's absolutely right. I think, you know, the key, probably in the residential areas is, you know, at least to me, that the walkability piece, making sure that sidewalks are integrated, that the parking is less prominent. And, and to the extent possible, incorporating some sort of meaningful central green space. Would make, those would make huge differences. Encouraging trees would make a huge difference, street trees. But yeah, it's, it's the commercial piece and linking you to that commercial piece, linking the residential to the commercial piece, I think that's key.
Yeah, I, I think trees would definitely make a big difference because without them, you're going to see a lot of buildings. And the residents of Litchfield, I doubt would appreciate that. So another thing is, you have to balance the visibility of the businesses to pass or people who are passing by the development versus making it a village. Cause they, certain aspects of that, like when you make it more centralized as a village, it makes it less visible to people that are driving by the development. And the visibility driving by the development is a major concern for the builder that, or the developer we anticipate will likely develop in Litchfield. So.
I think in this example, they're showing, if I can zoom in a little bit more. They are showing major, it may, maybe it's not obvious, but you know, here is major road and here is the commercial piece. So there's a recognition that you, you would obviously wanna do that. And yet, you know, again, this is a bigger development. There is a street coming in. The central open space is really very central, and then the homes are grouped, you know, kind of all around. So it's, it is kind of commercial in front, residential behind, but there is at least an integration, a connection. And then, yeah, design-wise, how do you address it? I think that Harvard does a lot with looking at their commercial as well, if I recall correctly. There's a lot of, well, that's overall grouping. Examples of what they liked and what they didn't. I thought there was another one, to the point of porches. I thought we had another one here. You know, something like that. I mean, that's a new building, but in terms of massing, you do have the kind of porch thing going on.
I don't think we need something as complex as that building.
We don't.
Cause that just increases the cost of developer, adds maintenance costs, and there aren't many of those in Litchfield either, so.
No, but I think what it's showing is it's showing placing dormers, even if there isn't an upper floor. If you have dormers, it, 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 it's a visual and it's in, it kind of breaks the eye and it, it doesn't look all uniform and, you know.
And that's what's happening in this example, which is a one-story building. But it, it, it does incorporate them, right?
Yeah, I think that's definitely the best example we have.
Yeah, when in doubt, put a kubla. Very New England.
And there are examples that look more like this in our region. I mean, Amherst comes to mind where, you know, that is the kind of thing they've been requiring. Some are more successful than others, but we could definitely find local examples, I think, of kind of what we're thinking. And there is a mix of examples out there of the smaller retail building as well as the office type, the smaller office type, might be a realtor's office. Or there's a doctor's office in here, there's two or three different things. So we could find some of those examples, I think, pretty readily. That's driving around on a nice day.
Some of these examples that you show, you know, it creates visual interest for the building, softens the exterior. But also a few notes, like to the members of the public when they walk by, like, oh, like, this is a business that I can patronize. Oh, this is commercial, this might not be for me, right?
And adjusting the parking is gonna be, you know, something to really think about because it's gotta be there. You know, this example, we're zoomed right up to the building, but there's almost certainly parking in front of it somewhere. So that's, you know, kind of some, that's gonna be something to think about, just in terms of design. But needless to say, it will need to be there, so.
One thing I'm wondering is potential recommendations or requirements for having, like, in the transition. Because, like, you could either have a big, long building, where the commercial's just facing away from the residential. Or you could have it built so that you have the commercial on both sides of the building. And maybe you put restaurants facing the residential and have the shops facing away from the residential. And have a central green space there where there might be some picnic tables that people who went to that restaurant could potentially use.
But you, I, I, I think you are right in that it, that, you know, that integration piece is gonna be, you know, the most challenging really is how do you, how do you transition from one to the other?
Yeah, cause, yeah, if you see a back of a building where it's just a loading dock, that's not gonna be friendly and inviting to the residential.
It is not.
So what, are you aware of any guidelines that we can put in place for this concern in particular?
I'm sure I could find them. We'll have to dive deeper, but I'm sure I could find them. In this example, which I guess is hard to really see, it appears that they've got buildings that are along the frontage of the street. But one of the ways they seem to be doing, handling this integration, and it might not be that obvious, again, this is a bigger development. So there's a main street coming in off of, I'll just say, the town road. And the commercial buildings are facing it so that the rear service areas are not backed up to the residential. So that's one way of managing is, is can you design it in a way so that that's not what's happening? And that, that might be harder for us to pull off because I do think that, again, it depends on how big the site is and where it is, right? And do you have that much room to really work on? But that's a way of doing it. Can you avoid those loading areas being, what is the transition? Cause that's obviously less than optimal for every reason. That's also where the dumpsters are gonna be. And it's going to be noisier and all that stuff.
Yeah, maybe a requirement that dumpsters and loading locations cannot be directly between them. And then let the developers figure out the best way to work around that.
Yeah, how do you do it? How do you pull it off?
Is like ideally, you'd probably have several little buildings, then maybe an area in between the little buildings where you have the commercial frontage facing both directions with an area in between the buildings for that.
Yes, I'm just zooming in here, because one of the advantages, I think, that we have is, so one of the advantages that we have is that the number of parcels that we're talking about are relatively few. And we know where they are. So if I can zoom in a little bit more. So it really is, as we think about possible regulations, you know, we've got, this is, let me zoom in a little bit more on this one. Looking at probably our largest example, so we already had a concept in here of how this could happen on probably the larger of these parcels. There is a road coming in here. There is a road coming in here and another one here. So there are internal roadways. Pretty obviously, this one is laid out with a commercial building here, a commercial building here, parking in the front, presumably loading and service areas right here. That's not necessarily, I think, what we want, but that's, in this scenario, that's exactly what that is. So then the question would be is, okay, can you, can this be redesigned in a way that would be a little bit more compatible? And probably, in this example, there's probably enough real estate here where that could happen. You've got a lot of open space, but you don't have any central type of green. But couldn't this be redesigned in a way where that happens? And maybe that happens as part of the transition between these two uses. Uh, maybe it happens somewhere else. Maybe this doesn't arc like this, but there's central open space and it's a bigger arc. I mean, there's different ways I think we could go about it, but, and we don't have to design it. But this really does, you know, kind of give us the opportunity to say, okay, here are, in fact, these various scenarios, these are the properties, realistically, that we're talking about. They're not the only properties.
Yeah, the other biggest one is literally just across the street on that one where there's the, yeah, right there where there's the field, the, 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 the farmed field, the unfarmed field, uh, and next to Saint Francis Way.
Exactly. That's a huge piece. And although I wouldn't wanna say, you know, that that's what should happen, we also have a large commercial recreation facility here that one day could be redeveloped. And that's a very large piece. A lot could happen on a piece like that. If that were to ever come to pass, that would be the biggest, I think, contiguous piece where there's a lot of opportunity. So we've got a few things to think about, but just the fact that we're not in a vacuum, I, I think makes it, you know, easier to deal with. What are we, what are we really looking for? And at the same time, you know, can we construct some standards or guidelines that are consistent with the village of the mixed use, are consistent with the concept of the mixed-use village, but that are also, you know, provide realistic opportunities for, you know, achieving the development of the sites, which was clearly the goal. Well, there's certainly a lot of options. There are, but at least I can start playing.
We can start providing pictures as we go around in our travels of what we like, what we don't like.
That would be really, really helpful.
That would be a good exercise.
And, and as we're going through that, kind of think about the concept of, you know, are we looking at developing something that's more hard and fast standards? Or are we looking to develop guidelines that are saying this is what we're looking at, or hybrid, which is possible? And we saw that example of, here are the concepts, here are the goals, oh, and here are some actual specific.
Yeah, you might have some non-negotiables, but other than that, I would stick to guidelines.
We're feeling that way too, just because it's, you know, I certainly don't wanna design these sites for them. I wanna say, these are the things that we're looking for, these are the goals.
Right, I don't think that's our, our job per se. I think our job is to give you guidance and sense of, you know, what we would like to see.
We just wanna be sufficiently clear. And, and then we can also, that, we may decide as we go along that there's more that we wanna incorporate, because you can get pretty, you know, for example, some of the ones that I've seen are pretty specific about the lighting fixtures. You know, these are the kinds of lighting fixtures that we wanna see and.
Couch lamps. They look pretty.
They do look pretty. But, but exactly, that kind of thing.
Signs, lamps, I hear ya.
So.
And this is where our friends at the Historic Commission might help too. And I realize it's not historical nature because it would be new, but, you know, they came to us earlier, um, at the end of last year and the beginning of this year with this notion of, you know, certain things that they wanted to see as you drove up three A, you know, and I, I think a lot. Um, certain things that they wanted to see as you drove up three A, you know, and I, I think a lot of their. Their, I I'd be interested in hearing their thoughts on design. Um, albeit a new building, because for them, you know, the character of the town is represented in the architecture of the buildings. And things that they were wishing to preserve, so it would be helpful, I think, um, as we create drafts. To get their take on it as well.
I, I think that would be valuable. And this is a gateway into Litchfield, so it's important. It does, it sets the tone, you wanna make the right statement about.
It's definitely very important that we do a good job with this because. This is probably s- more likely to be developed at a faster pace than anything else that's in the commercial, the other commercial district. Um, I think that the parking requirements are probably gonna be ones where we have to be a little bit more. Strict on because of like those more ugly garage structures and stuff like that.
You really don't like those, do you?
They're fine, they just don't fit the character of the town. I don't think the residents in Litchfield would appreciate them.
They're pretty prominent, well, you you can drive, you can see them in the neighborhoods where they are, for sure.
Like in this, oh, in this proposal here. I think they would probably be what's facing the road on that side. So you're gonna see those more than anything else.
That, that's right, in this concept, these are the units. And these are the carport structures and the same thing here. The central feature in here is it's not a green space, it's carports.
Yeah, exactly, so that's the, like, the townhouses mostly are just like a denser version of. The general um, character of Litchfield. Uh, less so at the carports. Uh, what, do you know what the plan was for that s- within the road area there? Within the loop of the road?
Uh, no, I don't know that there was any plan other than this is a loop road.
What, what, do you know what's inside of it?
What do you mean?
Like, can you uh maybe zoom into a hundred percent? So you can see that area.
Look like either single families or duplex.
Oh, you mean here? I, those look like single families to me. Yeah, tho- those have the appearance of single families to me. Again, they could be duplexes, they could be, and obviously this is just a concept, but um. It shows you how you could get a mix of housing types and density. I will say that is another thing that is talked about and. A lot of these guidelines is a mix of housing types and how important that is to us, especially in a larger site. You know, do you wanna see a mix of single two townhouse garden style or not? Or that doesn't, that's not important to us.
People don't complain about the character of single family homes. So if the single family homes are closer to Albuquerque, that might. That would definitely be better than having the townhouses right up against Albuquerque.
I think that's, that's true, that's certainly something, people, this is a very prominent stretch right here. A lot of people come and go, I mean, this is the busiest, you know, intersection there is in town, so you're, yeah. What you see at this intersection, that's a lens to think of, you know, this from same thing on this side. This is a very, very prominent. Intersection. And you know, similar here, you're looking at basically small commercial buildings that are surrounded by parking. And driveouts, so. Are we looking for something a little different than that?
How, how strict are our commercial parking requirements? Because allowing them to put. Uh, s- like airing on the side of too little parking would. Hmm, be good character wise, but. May make it so like parking lot gets full.
And maybe it's, you know, a good reason to be looking at our parking requirements simultaneously, cuz you certainly don't wanna require overparking. At the same time, I think we have to recognize, needless to say, pretty much everyone who doesn't live in this immediate area is going to drive. So that's the, it's achieving that balance, I think. At least on these smaller ones, the parking areas are relatively small, they're broken up. Um, and so, yeah, they're gonna be prominent, yeah, but a decently designed building. Um, if it's still up there. Something like this, I can see fitting right in here. You know, that could easily be that, and if you've got. You know, some, a building that looks like this, having some parking, pull-in parking in front and another aisle back here. You know, that's, that's not really that, I don't think that takes away significantly, so that's probably doable. Here, you have a larger commercial facade and you've got this long unbroken row of parking. Um, and again, obviously, it's just a concept, but if that were broken up, that would. You know, certainly have a much better appearance.
Yeah, having, I guess, if, if it's unfeasible to break up the building. Breaking up the parking with little islands with a little bit of vegetation on the islands would.
Right, keeping it from being just this long continuous. Um, or breaking it up, or in the case of, um. And that might not be realistic here, but in the example that we saw. Um, I don't wanna scroll too much of the layout in the Montgomery County one. In this scenario, they had the um, commercial buildings oriented towards the internal road. And so at least the parking is not all along three A then, it's here and here. And maybe you do a little of this, a little in the front, a little in the back, so that it's not all one strip, so there's probably a few ways. The key is maybe putting in some sort of a requirement and breaking up large parking fields. Maybe that's the way you encourage it. And yeah, probably ideally, it's also. Probably nicer to have the smaller scale, the building of that scale, which still is multi-tenant. Maybe versus something quite this large as a block, but that's something to think about.
Yeah, blocks are more cost-effective for the developer, um, but there's, they don't look as appealing.
Right, and I think in our district. You know, we, we both economically and in terms of what we allow are realistically not looking at very large footprint commercial buildings. Um, that's just not, that's not the kind of businesses we're gonna retract, so it's easier to break them up. Uh, so that's, that's definitely something to think about, I'll, I'll look at some examples like that. Um, I think these were actually proposed to not be part of a mixed use, that these were just gonna be commercial.
Yeah, everything across Albuquerque, I think he said, is separate.
Separate or potentially separate, yeah.
Technically, can he include those lots in, in the village total?
You could if you put them all together as one development, then conceivably you could. Because we do allow you to break it up into separate parcels, so it's just one project. Um, but yeah, those, these will probably be. Commercial on their own orbit, you know, maybe, maybe a group like this, a decision is made to go a different route, so it's, it's certainly possible. This is really the key, though I, I think, in this immediate area. Kind of zooming out though. But kind of once again, that's, that's kind of one. Property owner's vision, we know we have some other larger sites as well that we would consider at some. I should say that could be considered at some point, depending on which way they wanna go. So that's worth thinking about also. And that might have a very different look because this property uh doesn't have visibility from three A.
Yeah, unless they acquire the re- single family homes that are.
That's right, yeah, and so unless you did that, you really wouldn't have it, so what is your, what is a viable commercial option? For a mixed use in that scenario, I'm not sure. Obviously, there was once a warehouse proposed there, but that's not what you're gonna find in a mixed use. Development realistically, um.
Yeah, that is not permitted with the mixed use.
Right, so, yeah, that might look very, very different, or it may necessitate combining it with some of those orange lots, which. Is one of those things where you kind of think over time is probably gonna happen anyway in a commercial district. So, uh, yeah, I mean, there's a lot to think about, but it's something that we shouldn't back better, needless to say.
Maybe you can give us um, next time. Some ideas and um, look at some more examples and um. You know, obviously, I, I think, you know, the parking requirements, I think, br- add it, kind of putting that into that process, I think is important.
Yeah, cuz I'll definitely.
So we can work, at least incorporate it into our, uh, what we're doing in terms of the design.
When would this session of the legislature be wrapped up to know about what they're doing with parking?
I mean, we are, we probably won't, they won't be done till June.
I was gonna say, the summer or the fall, by the time they get back into session again.
So for anything coming out of this session is gonna have to be done by July, so. We'll know, um, there's a, there's a lot that's passed the House, but you still have, it still has to get through the Senate, so.
Are there any noteworthy changes that are being proposed that you think might become a comment? Take effect at some point?
What would be till, till June, they're saying, that they were reducing the um, parking for multifamily, weren't they?
Reduced parking requirements are definitely coming. Um, there have been lot, and and what's the latest status of everything is, is I'm not sure, there's lot size requirements out there. That um, definitely are coming, those actually don't, probably won't impact Litchfield. Because we don't have large lot zoning here, but for the communities that do, that'll be an impact. Um, detached ADUs allowed on all. Uh, single family lots, so in addition to now, it's, you can have, you have to allow attached. You can allow detached.
And they were talking about twelve hundred square feet too on.
Inc- right, increasing the size of ADUs prohibiting any, requiring any familial relationship. Um, there's, there's a lot of them out there, uh, and then there's other ones that affect. Um, you know, timing of review and. You just various different requirements out there, um. Requiring that group homes are allowed in every zoning district, and there's just, there's a slew. Of housing, they're, they're mostly housing related, that's, that's where they're coming from. And um, couple have died, but yeah, there's, there's more to come. And then we'll be next year too.
Okay, thank you.
For sure, I guess it's interesting.
Yes, yeah, it's the preview of coming attractions.
It will be a very active legislative session. We'll keep our eyes out, we, we have enough to do then. Could be a few more things that we'll need to do. Or not. Well, just because again, some of them are not gonna impact Litchfield too significantly.
So, yeah, I'm thinking about like commercial stuff, um, there's a little. Commercial building that I've passed on my way to work in Tingsboro, Massachusetts, and I wonder what. You, uh, everyone here like thinks about these designs, this is a pretty typical design, I think.
Very, very typical.
Has a little tiny like awning type thing around it. Uh, it looks like it has a very small brick facade near the foundation, a lot of windows. Um, not a big building overall, but it is a flat roof.
Yeah, I think it comes down to um. Our goals, right? Um, I'm looking for a. Presentation that I may or may not find. See if I can find this one. So this was a presentation that we did for the Economic Development Committee. And one of the things that we did was show different examples, right? So that's a Dunkin' Donuts, so is that. Right, does one fit what we're looking for more or not, but we did a lot, we did a whole. You know, what do you like, what do you think fits in Litchfield, what don't you think fits in Litchfield? Of course, people like the rural looking things very much. Um, this was an example of a, that is actually a more modern building, it's, I shouldn't say modern, but it is a. Relatively recent building, that's not historic, um, that is an older building, but that's, you know, to that point. It, do we, you know, are, is this something that we wanna see, is this okay, it's, it's not a pitched roof, there are no gables. Um, it is, you know, it does probably meet a thirty percent window. Opening, you know, type requirement, there is a variation, um. Bedford Village Inn, again, older, that is a shopping center in Hollis that was, was once a shopping center. That was actually a grocery store, yeah, so no longer, but kind of again, they, of course, this is Hollis. But they went with the porch and the pitched roof and. Um, that's still there, different use, that's a CVS in Merrimack. Merrimack was trying to create a town center feel, so that's very much. The porch, again, the pitched roof, the dormers, right. So, or if you can imagine the CVS as you are, you know, in Hudson. Making your left to come up to three A, you're on, you know, making your left onto Webster Street, that's a very different looking CVS, so. You know, those are, so that's that kind of very typical retail strip building they're building now. Uh, everywhere.
Have you seen the um, ha- the newer Howard, Hayward's Ice Cream Building in Merrimack? Yeah, that, that one doesn't have, it has a flat roof, but does have um, like a porch.
Yes, it does, then there's some other design examples.
It, it seems pretty reasonable in terms of the character.
So, I mean, those are the things that we have to think about, you know, do, do we? Do we say we want this? You know, or. Are we fine with that?
I don't know exactly what the Litchfield residents would like mo- most, um.
I think I would prefer the, the former rather than the latter.
I think they probably like that more.
I think we.
Just a guess.
Yeah, probably require at least some level of dormers and or porches. Something in, it doesn't have to be a strict must, but should include at least one of type of thing.
I think that's right, and if I am recalling correctly, this example in Merrimack is part of a mid-century shopping center. And I think this was all added. Um, they might have demolished the, that end of the shopping center, but. I have a feeling this was all adapted for what that's worth, but yeah, that's just another example of a, that's a larger. Footprint building than probably the other one that we saw. We'll, we'll tool, we'll come up with some examples, we'll see kind of what. What people seem to respond to and like and. We'll go from there.
Okay, that's good.
Well, thank you, Jay.
For all that, I appreciate it and um, we'll definitely be revisiting this.
More to come.
More to come. Okay, moving on, uh, number four is a refund of escrow account for Weatherstone and Horizon Drives. Four thousand five hundred thirty dollars and twenty seven cents plus interest, Joan.
Yes, I had looked, the last um, activity on that account was either two thousand twenty-two or earlier. Um, so those roads are done, paved, inspected.
So I guess we would be looking for a motion to re- refund on that account, um. Anybody interested in making a motion?
I don't really know what it, what the property is for, what.
It's off of Page Road, um.
Yeah, it's a, is it, it's a development, isn't it?
It's a build, develop, development.
So this is just standard procedure with your refund that, that they held in escrow for a distinct period of time?
The money's been kept there, obviously, they're done with the project, and typically what happens is that the, any remaining amount. With the interest.
Things held in sep- they're separate accounts.
Yeah, goes back.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we refund the escrow account for Weatherstone and Horizon Drives. In the amount of four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and twenty seven cents plus any interest that may have accrued. To date.
All right, sounds good, uh, and the motion, do I have a second? Second, okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you. All right, uh, next up is committee reports, any reports from any committees? Um, I know Jeremy isn't here for economic development, but I know Jay, you're on that committee, anything, any updates, do you know?
I am, but I could not attend the last meeting, so I.
Putting together some sort of a draft.
They're putting together, yes, the, the draft report and so, um, you know, a template was created. For what that's gonna look like, but that's the intent to. Get something together for the, ultimately for the select party.
Okay, very good. Anything from NRPC?
Uh, no, nothing new.
Uh, the forum, when is that, is that in May?
Forum is May eighth. And the next commission meeting is of, going to be, I believe, April sixteenth. Yes, so April sixteenth is the next full commission meeting and it will be a busy. Agenda, okay?
Very good, thank you, um, I know that the Capital Improvement Committee is meeting April seventh at six thirty. Uh, here, I believe here in Town Hall, um. The, uh, Conservation Commission just had its meeting, um, at the beginning of the month, first Thursday of the month. Um. And the Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee, um, no updated projects, um, from what I understand. I haven't heard anything from them. Um, I think that's all I have. Um, approval of the March fourth, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Did anybody have an opportunity to take a look at those, have any questions? Any concerns?
They looked good to me.
Yeah, I didn't notice anything.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that struck out. Anybody wanna entertain a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the March fourth minutes.
I have a motion by Russ, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Jared, any further discussion? Take a vote, all those in favor of approval of the March fourth, two thousand twenty-five minutes, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, anybody abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, motion passes, um, four, zero, one. Um, next item is any other business, um, so. It's that time of year. And of course, my computer fails me. Let's see if I can find the email.
Yeah, Windows updating needs.
Yeah, I know, exactly, love it, um, so typically at this time of year, after we've been through the deliberative session town meeting. Um, it's the election of officers, uh, for boards, uh, and commissions. And this is usually when we, um. Have, uh, we, does, uh, and, and I, I say this because, and I always say this. My seat here is not endowed in perpetuity. Um, it's funny, cause I was, I was at, I was at, um, the, uh, the town voting and someone, a former person who was on the, uh. Used to be on the planning board, came up to me and said, you know, you're one of the last, last of the remaining. Been there a while, so, um, with that said, um, I, this is a disposable office, I, I will, I will say that. Um, this is an opportunity, if you guys want to change things, um. And also too, um, and I don't know if we wanna discuss this tonight, but maybe we can, for next time, the bylaws. The bylaws usually are updated, um, do we wanna update them, do we wanna take a look at them and see if there's anything that we wanna add to them, so. I'm not gonna have, do that tonight, but just to let you know, that's something that we may wanna think about.
In terms of the bylaws, I think the only thing, discussion item we had last time we discussed them that we might wanna talk about is the secretary.
Secretary role, right, so we do have a, I think Jeremy is the, currently the secretary. And uh, obviously, I'm the chair, you're the vice chair, so if anybody wants to change that, if anybody has any nominations that they wanna make. Uh, tonight, um.
Personally, I would like to probably defer until we have a full board. I agree.
I agree with that.
So maybe we can put both items on the next agenda.
Sure, yeah, okay, so that's, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have Travis and we don't have other people here, so, um, I think that would be fair. And uh, to them, and so we will defer this till the next meeting when we have a full board, uh, so that we can. At least have some input from the other members who are not here this evening.
Wanna make one of them chairman tonight.
We could, but it may not count, turn out that great, but. Um, and obviously, um, you know, uh. We obviously have to send the results of the votes to, um, uh, Kim Kleiner, who's the town administrator, and of course, uh. Terry, uh, the town clerk, cause she's the keeper of records, so, for the town, so, um, that would have to be done, so. I, 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 I agree, I think we should table that discussion until we have a full board here, so, we will do that. But think about that for next time, I guess, uh, if you wanna, would like, um. I never expected I would.
You are so stuck.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it is in perpetu- ah, I know, can't say that. That would be an omen, huh, I don't think. Although I know some people would probably appreciate that, but. Others, I have no idea, um, so, um, anything else? Jay, do you have anything, any other business this evening?
Do not.
Joan, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Yeah, anybody have anything? Well, I guess with that, I don't have anything else, so I guess we will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Leith, I don't have a second. All right, further discussion, all right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, abstain, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you all for joining us this evening, um, hopefully get outside, uh, spring is, I think, coming very soon and, um.